Good, okay, sorry. Good evening. It is still 5:30 PM on Wednesday, September 7th, 2022. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding. Also present are Councilors Kate McAllister, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, Andy Groth, Jason Walker, and Justin Dick. We'll now recite the pledge of allegiance.
The regions to the flag of the United States of America. Just stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. So I do want to make an announcement here about the room here to start. The sound system here in the council chambers regarding the sound system here. Staff went through a complete review and testing of our system with our audiovisual provider a few days ago. And we are in the process of replacing the microphones used by staff at the tables here up front in particular. And in the meantime, to prevent feedback, some of the speakers in the ceiling in the middle of the room are not turned up quite as loud as those in the front of the room and in the back. We've increased the volume in the speakers in the back of the room. So if you're finding it difficult to hear, there, consider either sitting in the back row where the speakers are turned up. Or, as I mentioned, that this is a temporary issue and it will be addressed in the coming months. Additionally, we'd also like you to make you aware that we have assisted listening devices. So we've got, I think we have five of them, and they're available here in council chambers to check out, to use during public meetings. So staff has used them. I guess they work really well. They're simple to use and you can control the volume directly on your device and make it really easy to hear all that is being said through all of the microphones. So if you'd like to try one out, please see staff at the conference table at the back there. And they can get you checked out. So does council have any announcements?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So I wanted to say welcome back to school to our educators and those fine students. And then just to remind our community to be a little bit more mindful in their commute. Our streets are a little bit more full. People are a little bit more excited. So just everybody take a deep breath. We will get through this together. Along with that, with my commute to work on Boyer, obviously we know that there's a lot of construction going on and construction comes with debris and dust and gravel. I got on our Engage Sandpoint to bring to the attention that our roads and our bike lanes are a little obstructed and very promptly tonight, as a matter of fact, the streets were clear. So I do appreciate the extra work that Engage Sandpoint does and the click, the click fix, the
See click fix.
That one. So things work well. So thank you very much.
All right. Thanks. Thanks for that. Any others from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
First, I'd like to acknowledge our city planner and congratulate her on her recent wedding and welcome back to work after a well-deserved break. I have two events that I'd like to mention for the council's benefit tonight. The first is this Saturday, the City of Sandpoint's Parks Department is hosting a Schweitzer Hill Climb event. It took a couple of years off, but it's back. It's a really cool bike ride organized by Jason Wiley in the Parks Department. So I'd just like to promote that. It starts at 10 AM, I think, on Saturday. It's a really fun cycling event. And on behalf of my wife, who's a supporter of the Bonner County History Museum, I'd like to promote the the 50th anniversary party of the Bonner County Historical Society, which is a week from Friday at the museum itself in Lakeview Park. And they will be doing a party inside the museum to celebrate the 50th anniversary and it'll include a time capsule. So they're inviting members of the community to submit stories from their time here that will be buried for the next 50 years and opened up for some future generation to learn about life in Sandpoint in 2022. So they've also invited several local members of the class of 1972 from Sandpoint High School to participate and tell their stories from their memories from 50 years ago. So that's Saturday, or sorry, Friday, the 16th at four o'clock at the History Museum.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else? Okay. Staff, what you got?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are full of announcements today. On special events, kind of on our theme of events coming up this week, we have permitted four special events this weekend. One is a locally produced movie premiere that will be held at Panada Theater Friday night. The movie is called The Fade and impacts will be, they wanted to do a red carpet event. So there's a couple of parking spots in front of the Panada that we've allowed them to reserve for a limo to pull up and for cast and production crew to make an entrance for that movie premiere on Friday. So that's why it's a permitted special event. We typically aren't permitting for an event at the Panada because it's in a private facility, but they had requested that red carpet space in front of the Panada. Also, this weekend is the annual Ponderay Cup, our largest soccer tournament of the year, and that will be Friday night through Sunday. And it's at our sports complex as well as over at War Memorial Field. And we have heard from neighbors the concerns about impacts with parking for events, on large events specifically in that area. So we did have conditions about making participants aware of where they can park. And we will be actively enforcing with the crows this weekend parking. So we are aware of those concerns. Saturday is also the Sand Creek Regatta. And there will be some reserved parking for that event that will be at our Sand Creek block just outside of City Beach. So there will be some parking impacts there. And that's a fun public event that's been held over the last several years. There is a cornhole tournament downtown, downtown throwdown that will be on Second Avenue. And on that block right outside of where Yafei is, 219, that block right there. And so there will be street closure there on Saturday for that particular event. Be all of Second Avenue. It will not be on our events based on Main Street. So that will be occurring on Saturday. So those four events this weekend, it'll be a busy weekend. And then we've got a couple of staff updates and with Amanda and Maeve, but I want to start with getting past the end of the summer season into fall. We have a number of events that we are going to be launching, community surveys here in the next week, as well as there will be some community meetings. And I don't want to take away any of the thunder from our staff on that. But I will say on our surveys, we'll be doing a survey relative to parks usage specifically for the new James Russell Sports Complex. As we're working on our operations plan for that, we will have another community survey on snow, the upcoming snow season. And Amanda will talk about that a little bit more here in a minute. And then we are also going to be doing a survey on the proposed dog park at Lakeview Park behind War Memorial Field that was part of our adopted parks master plan for that area behind War Memorial Field. So we are underway with design for the dog park and we'll be looking for public input. And on our last dog survey, we had over 800 responses to that. It was one of our more popular surveys. So here we go with dog parks and an opportunity to give input on that. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Amanda to do further update on upcoming construction activity as well as snow season.
Yes. Which part? Just kidding. Good evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to give you a couple of updates. I'll start with snow because I know that everyone is super excited for winter. We are in the process of reevaluating the previously adopted operation and for snow removal and policy. The last time we visited that as a community and council was in 2018. So taking another look at that. And as part of that effort, before bringing any proposed changes forward to city council, we're going to be launching the survey that Jennifer mentioned to get some broader feedback. And then our intent is to bring that forward into a workshop session, that first meeting in October for city council and the public. Not requesting any approvals at that time, just a conversation. And then bringing forward hopefully at the next meeting, any changes to the operations plan as well as policy. So coming to you soon, we hope to have that survey published in the next coming days. So it'll be out for a couple of weeks. Moving away from snow season and focusing more on summer and construction projects. Excited to announce that the Main Street paving project has been completed. That is all done. It was completed prior to Labor Day. And that also included a portion of Ruth, south of Maine. Ontario Street, the paving will be this Thursday and Friday from the slough all the way to Lincoln. And that project will be wrapped up in the next week. And then we also are getting ready to mobilize this week on Ruth Avenue. We have a water main project that city council previously awarded the contract to. There were a few changes that were beyond the contractor's control. So at a no cost change, we're actually extending that project completion date to the end of October. So they'll be mobilizing this week, starting work on Monday, working through the end of October to get that completed. We will be doing a temporary asphalt repair as a result of the trenching that'll accompany the water main replacement. The intent is to do the full width repaving project in the spring of next year. So we're currently in the process of design and we'll go out to bid for that project following it. Just a few details on that, we will be issuing a press release on that project and the impacts. And we'll also be putting notifications on all of the residence doors that are adjacent to that project that will occur tomorrow morning. The work hours for that are 8 AM until 8 PM. And we anticipate, given the proximity to the existing water main and having to work in such close proximity to it, as well as the new connections for the water main, there will be precautionary boil advisories associated with that. We do those on a frequent basis anytime we're lowering water pressure below 20 PSI or even anticipate that we might. So residents will see that. We always do that via door hangers. We have notices on our website. So there'll be lots of communication about when you need to boil your water and when you don't. And not until you're notified to you need to boil your water. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Great, thanks. Council, questions? All right. Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're still moving on with updates and announcements. Our next round will be relative to parks and recreation. And I know a question that's hanging out there in the community is where we are with the James Russell Sports Complex. And when we will see designs on that, because again, it's design build. At this point, we anticipate unveiling the design for that at a presentation to council at your next council meeting. We'll also hold a public meeting with that with the user groups. So we have an opportunity to engage with them as well. So that is coming and not part of our announcements tonight. And we don't have anything visually tonight. But I think the community is going to be very pleased with where we've gotten with that project. So Maeve, you've got dog park, watershed, and skate park.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Jennifer. Hello, council. Good to see you all tonight. So the first one that's coming up, we have the All Wheel Skate Park fundraiser that's happening on September, Saturday, September 17th. That's just around the corner. So we wanted to put this on your radar. It's going to kick off a big fundraiser, two parts. First thing, nine o'clock in the morning, our friends over at our adjacent gym at the Sandpoint Conditioning. It's a CrossFit style gym right next door to City Hall off of Olive Street. They're going to host a fundraising event and, you know, serendipitous things are happening in the universe. And they picked a workout of the day to do, and they happened to pick my brother's hero workout. And as you may recall, my brother was a Green Beret that was killed in Afghanistan in 2013. And he has, in his honor, we developed a workout called the Liam Nevin's Hero Wad. This is a CrossFit term and it was adopted at the national level. It's quite, quite laborious and I honestly have to scale the whole thing. I'm definitely not in a Green Beret body. However, for those of you that would like to come support and for anyone who wants to be a part of it, the community is invited. We do have the Selkirk Fire and Emergency Responders are going to join us for that. I'm not sure what that means, if they're just going to be there to cheer or bring us our donuts. But there's going to be quite the crew there. So that's at 9 AM on Saturday, September 17th. And it is a fundraiser. T-shirts have been made and we're also making private donations towards the skate park. They asked me and my family what we wanted to do for a community, a community donation. And of course, I picked the best project in town. We went with the skate park. And right after that, at 10 AM is going to be the kickoff to the King of the Concrete event. And as you may recall, that's an annual skate park event. And the Bonner County Skate Park Association is hosting that this year. And with that Emmerich, Emmerich Construction, our contractors are sponsoring and they're also making a big donation to the skate park directly from our, from our team members. So it's pretty exciting to have them already in, as part of our community. Following that, as Jennifer mentioned, we have the Dog Park Kickoff Public Meeting coming up. So please save the date. This is going to be on Monday, September 7th, September 19th. At 5:30 PM, we're going to have a public meeting over at the park. We're going to meet at the picnic shelter at 5:30. And it's right, the picnic shelter is located right by the restrooms and behind the field over by the boat launch area. And we're going to meet with the designers. We hired a landscape architecture team from BWA and El Hatch and his team are going to be there. They're actually the ones that did the original master plan concept. So this is just design 2.0 and we're going to be building on that in the survey that Jennifer held last year. So lots of great things are going to happen in that area. And then the third thing, just to save the date, we're still a month out, but I want to put it on your radar because this is so exciting. It's part of our strategic plan and one of our goals is the Little Sand Creek Watershed Recreation Master Plan. We have, the International Mountain Bike Association is coming to town the week of October 11th to the 14th, or I'm sorry, the 10th to the 14th. And on October 11th, there's going to be an open house meeting for a general, learn about the project, learn about where we are. We're going to kick off a survey at that same time for the public. And so that's sort of the general introduction to the project. And that's going to be hosted by myself and my partner, Betsy Bryan, who's with the National Park Service. And then on that following Wednesday, the 12th, we are going to partner with the Ponderay Peddlers and the Sandpoint Nordic Club as well as Kinnick's Uland Trust. And they're going to be having a public meeting for trail enthusiasts specifically to meet with Imba and those designers from that, that group. And we're going to meet at 5:30 PM at the Matchwood Brewing Company. So that's more of a specific stakeholder group. And of course, everyone's invited to both meetings, but definitely the first one will be more general. And throughout that week, Betsy and I are going to be having individual stakeholder meetings. We're going to have a lot of site visits and so we'll be reaching out to different groups and focusing in on the plan and we'll be rolling out that whole plan to you in more of an organized detail. And finally, I just want to put it on your radar. We did complete the urban forestry management plan on schedule. So Jennifer and I have the draft to review and then we're going to work with the Urban Forestry Tree Committee and get our comments in and then we'll be coming to you probably in the next month or so. We have to digest a few things. So just want to let you know everything's on track and that's about it. Any questions?
Um, just one, Maeve, you, you mentioned October 11th, but you didn't give a time for that.
Oh, 5:30. I'm sorry. Both meetings are at 5:30. So we have one on October 11th and that will be here at City Hall. And then the second one will be the 12th. And that's the one with the, with Pop and with the Nordic Club. And that's at 5:30 to at Matchwood.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I guess just real quick, this is just an observation. Can you tell us how many people are watching on Zoom?
We have two attendees.
And then, thank you for everybody that's here in the public. You guys are doing a great job with getting this out to the public. I'm sure that our local papers are going to pick this up. But your efforts are very recognized and noticed. And this is a huge ask from our public to participate in their city and their future. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. And just to piggyback that Andy Jennifer did lead the way last week. We had a great interview on the local radio channel and ran through all of this. So if you did get to hear that, there is a replay on the podcast and you can hear more in depth about our projects. But yes, Jennifer will be posting everything and we've got a whole outreach plan that we're going to roll out to you. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Maeve, I do have one suggestion. With regards to the dog park, you might reach out to, because we have a, in our, not our community, but our neighboring community, there's quite an amazing dog park in Ponderay. And that was overseen, the development that was overseen by the Better Together Animal Alliance. And I did actually chat with their director just recently and she was really, really excited to hear that we're developing a dog park here in Sandpoint. And she did offer her experience and her insights into what, you know, she admitted that they made some mistakes that you might want to hear from her about in the development of Sandpoint's dog park. So I can put you in contact with her if you're interested. But we, it's really exciting to have a dog park in South Sandpoint. I'm super stoked for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I will follow up. Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Maeve. Appreciate it. Right, is that it?
That is it. Just I would guess that we've come with a lot of dates, upcoming surveys, events. So a reminder to keep up with what we're doing at the city, one of the easiest ways is to, going back to Councilor Groth's comment earlier, downloading the Engage Sandpoint app. It's in the Google Play Store and it's in the iTunes Store. We send out notifications about these things in the app. So you get it, know you have notifications right on your phone. Notifications about surveys come out there and you can actually access the surveys really easily right there in the app. There's a button that we launch for all of the surveys. When the surveys are done, we pull the button down. We will also have them up on our Facebook page, accessing them there as well as on our website. So all of those different communication channels we use to get information out. And also encouraging people, again, if you have filled out our survey in the past or are going to be doing one of these future surveys, there's an opportunity to actually register in our open town hall. That's our survey system. If you register in it, the benefit to you is when we close out a survey, you can get the results there. And you also get first notifications when we launch a new survey. So you're not missing another survey coming out, you know. If it's a topic you choose not to participate in, then you don't have to participate, but at least you know a survey is out there. So we have several that are coming out. And again, we do both the online surveys to make it convenient for people as well as the in-person meeting. And there's going to be a few virtual meetings around some of these topics as well. So people can participate that way also.
Thank you for that, Jennifer. Appreciate it. Thank you, staff, for those announcements. I have a few more comments that I want to make. There've been some things happening out there in the public sphere and the media that have been heavy on my heart. And so I want to speak to that a little bit. So, and I'm speaking in particular about the recent events at the Boundary County Library over recent weeks. September 10th is the last day of Executive Director Kimber Glidden, excuse me. She resigns from the library after enduring ongoing intimidation and harassment for standing up against extremism that was organized to censor and restrict access to reading material at the public library. By the way, this was for reading material that did not, that does not exist at the library. I'm disheartened to see Ms. Glidden resign as a result of bullying. From all accounts, she's a great service to the library and to the community of Boundary County. And I want to commend her and the Boundary County Library Board for their service and bravery in upholding their legal obligation to encourage intellectual freedom in our state, in our state, in our community, even in the face of intimidation and harassment. Kimber and the board held to and continue to hold to the library's principles and their charter. These are principles that are sacrosanct in a free and democratic society. Freedom of information and the right to a fair and balanced education. This is the latest example of how extremism, like a cancer, can infect our community. Taking away our liberties, threatening public safety, our quality of life, and our opportunities for prosperity. We've been challenged by these forces historically and in particular in recent years. And I bring this to your attention now because evil deeds are free to proliferate in the darkness. And as your public servant, I feel it is my duty to help shed light onto that darkness. We must be aware of what is happening in our community and what are the real threats to our way of life. Our communities suffer greatly when we lose talented, committed people, community oriented people to threats, harassment, and incivility. Not only do we lose good people today, it becomes incredibly difficult to replace them because who wants to sign up for that? That reputation that we now as a community have, it sticks with us. I know that our library faced similar threats over the last couple of years and I'm very grateful that it held together. I'm grateful that we have an excellent board and executive director. I think the reader and the Daily Bee, the Bonners Ferry Herald, and other reporters who shed light on this unfortunate story and others like them. I hope that we as a community can continue to remain strong and vigilant and committed to the project of protecting freedom and information from those who would take it from us. And my hope also extends to protecting all of our longstanding values that increasingly are under threat in this current age of disinformation and conspiring to dismantle our foundational institutions. To borrow the words of Amy Flint, who serves on the East Bonner County Library Board, "Now more than ever, it is imperative that we guarantee the freedom to read, the freedom of expression, the freedom of information, and the right to a fair and balanced education." "The library rightfully protects the rights of all people." And I applaud the East Bonner County Library for upholding that commitment to all of us. On a related matter, I know council has received some undeserved and some undeserved public criticism for some recent decisions. When we choose, when we choose public service, we knowingly invite such criticism. We know what we're signing up for. But so often, those who are critical of the difficult decisions made by leadership don't understand the whole of the issues and all of their complexity. I know everyone up here works really hard to understand the issues and make the best decision that they're able for the benefit of Sandpoint and the entire community. I know this not just because I know all of you in your daily lives, but because I witness it up, up here every day when I sit up here with you every day on the dais. You live with integrity inside and out. And I'm really proud of each and every council member for how hard you work, your commitment to community, your integrity, your honor, and your ethical standards. And I'm especially proud of you for making difficult decisions and bearing the brunt of public criticism, often uninformed and undeserved. The integrity of our council president was recently called into question from a photo that was taken years ago, long before her public service, for doing her job, supporting a local business. Kate, as I'm sure all of you know, is the longstanding president and CEO of the Sandpoint Chamber of Commerce. Of course, she is going to do whatever she can to support a local business, just like she does for all Sandpoint businesses. To vilify her in the paper for doing so is shameless. It does nothing to benefit her, the council, Sandpoint businesses, or the community. Your public servants are here because they care deeply about their community and are willing to sacrifice their free time and talent to help their community thrive. I'm sure there are countless other things these public servants could be doing with their time that'd be a much, that would be a much greater personal benefit to the, each and every one of them. But they chose to be up here serving you. There's no other reason to do this often thankless duty other than the desire to serve your community. And I would expect that the public and especially former public servants themselves would understand that. So to Kate and to all my fellow council members, I thank you for continuing to show up and do your best and make difficult decisions each and every day that you sit up here on the dais. Even when they're unpopular and you take heat for it. So thank you. And I don't know that we've had a stronger council than we have today. And to city staff, I echo those sentiments as well. I think Sandpoint has always been fortunate to have excellent, professional, community-centered staff. We've been really lucky as a small town to have the people that we've had work here. And those that serve the city today are as talented And those that serve the city today are as talented, hardworking, and dedicated as as we've ever had. Each and every one of you demonstrate an incredibly high level of commitment, dedication to excellence. And just sheer passion. And it shows. And I know I speak for council and for the whole Sandpoint resident, of Sandpoint residents, when I say thank you for your professionalism. Your tremendous effort to make Sandpoint the best community that it can be, one which I am very proud to call home. I hope that council and staff can take these comments to heart and remember that every day you're doing incredibly valuable work. That benefits all of us today and well into the future. You are appreciated. So thank you. With that, we will now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address council. And myself regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda. A total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we'll provide an opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. Those here in chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a signup form, which is located up by the front door there on the table. And fill it out and hand it to our clerk here up front, our assistant clerk, Philin today. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, eh, I will ask for public, public comment, and then you will raise your hand on online. Of course, you'll need a working microphone and you'll need to unmute yourself. Comments shall not be personally derogatory. Nor shall they be personally directed at any individual organization or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Please do not direct any questions to council staff. And please do not approach the dais. Thank you. So, um, and please note those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand. That is being taken up by the council. Disrupted behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise, comments, or exclamations from the audience. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. And Madam Assistant Clerk, do we have anyone who has signed up to speak during the public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've got two individuals in the room.
Please call out the name.
One moment while I bring up the timer. First up, we have Amelia Boyd.
Good evening. Amelia Boyd, I just wanted to invite the community and you guys, Jennifer touched base on it. We're one of the four permits this weekend. Seven B Baggers Cornhole Club, I happen to be the treasurer. And we are a nonprofit. We have raised almost $11,000 for our local food bank, senior center, and CASA. And various families that were, have needed the need throughout the years. So this particular throwdown, downtown throwdown is actually going to be a CASA fundraiser, which is the core appointed special advocates for children. In situations that are less than desirable. So I would appreciate if anybody in the public or if you yourselves would have an inkling to play cornhole. Saturday morning, we start at 9:00 AM with advanced singles, doubles, and beginner doubles. And then at 2:00, advanced doubles, a competitive singles, and beginner singles. And like I said, all of the, most of the proceeds will be going, after we do cash payout for the winners, will go to CASA. So that will be on Second Avenue between Main and Church, right behind, like Jennifer said, 219. In that one city, city block. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Appreciate that.
Next up, we have Luke Omot.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for your public service. I'm here today as a fierce advocate of workforce housing. There are many types of loss in our community. There are very few that we can do something about. Sitting on planning and this Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission has been a privilege and a challenge. When we last had our joint meeting and I listened to the housing study, I found it to be frustrating. Because there is such great need and so little that we have within our power to do. But what I am here tonight to advocate is something that you do have power. And what I mean is to not wait for the update of our comp plan. I would like to speak specifically to Goal E3, which is found on page on 96 of our current plan. And it's about the people that are in Sandpoint today, the people that are looking for housing today. Goal E3 economic is for workforce needs. And it says this, to provide Sandpoint workers with affordable housing options near jobs, public transportation, and non-motorized transportation options. As a body, you have the ability to consider adjusting City Code 9-1-8, the accessory dwelling regulation. Change is hard. It was hard for Sandpoint to go to accessory dwellings. They started off as 650 square feet. It was later changed to 900 square feet. However, what was not changed to 900 with that was the amount of bedrooms. Simply by changing the number of bedrooms and meeting the intent of our current comprehensive plan, the one that is on the books now. Would provide people that are looking to get housing, a quick change that you have the ability to do. There are a few things that we can do, and I want to tirelessly advocate for anything we can. To keep all those who have chosen and are trying to make Sandpoint their home and to give them that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Omot. I appreciate your passion on that subject. And I can assure you that the commission will be taking up that issue in the near future. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Next up, we have Becky Meyer with Lake Pondure School District Superintendent.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council people. I just wanted to say thank you for what you said, Councilor Groot. But we had a great start this last couple of days. We have almost 3,700 students and a few more expected to come this week. There's a lot of students back in the building and we have made, not, everyone's not in favor of it, but we have made some changes to safety. We had a district safety task force team I told you about last time I was here. We have been meeting every single Monday. And Officer Don Little, who is the SRO now at Sandpoint High School on the Sandpoint Police, he's been there every week. Um, and we've met for several hours every week. And we do have some restrictions this year that we didn't have in place, but we feel like it's making it safer for all families. We have several parents and everyone that's on the committee has spent extensive time really researching it and seeing, wearing badges. Having single points of entry. We're looking at perimeter fencing. We also are looking at keyless entry. I wrote a grant last week for 85,000, so hopefully that will be coming. Um, and, and we are doing things that are helping the students and the staff in the feeling safe. So it, there is a little bit cumbersome for families who want to drop off something when, after the school starts, the door is locked. That hasn't ever been in the past. Um, but so far, the feedback from parents has been positive. Uh, the other thing I want to say is it's the time for surveys because we have, uh, the board decided before they hired a new superintendent that they're going to let the last five-year comprehensive plan, strategic plan stop, and we'd be starting over. So we have a fresh, clean slate. And we have three community input forums coming. We have one at Sandpoint Middle School on Monday, September 19th. It's going to be in the cafeteria. Then Tuesday on the 20th is Clark Fork. And then Wednesday is at Sagal Elementary. So you're invited to come to those. We also will have an online survey. So you can, if people can't come, they can give us feedback, but really interested in where the community wants to take our school district in the next five years and beyond. So I just wanted to thank you for partnering with us on the SRO. School safety is extremely important to us this year. Safe routes to school, people walking, uh, it's a walking town and just reminding people of all that and buses. Really being careful for the buses, not passing buses when the crossing arm is down. So thank you for your partnership and I welcome you. If any of you ever want to go onto a walkthrough with me in any of the buildings, I would love to have you. So thank you very much.
Thanks for those comments. Appreciate it. Is that it?
Yes.
All right. That concludes the public forum portion of the meeting this evening. We will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is 460,173.75. For regular payables. Are there any items council wishes to remove from this consent column? Okay. Seeing none of it entertaining motion, that kind of be approved. Second, they moved in seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Spurro?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Gro?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Consent calendar is approved. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on a request to obtain preliminary approval of a 25-lot subdivision on one parcel. Bonner County Parcel RPS 3950003001A. 10A, excuse me, totaling approximately five acres bounded by Bonner County Jail property to the north, Samuelson Avenue to the west. Private property to the south and Boyer Farm Estates Phase 1 Development to the east. The site is in the vicinity of North Boyer Road and Woodland Drive, legally described as Lot 1, Block 3, Boyer Farm Estates. Section 1010 Township 57 North, Range 2 West Boise Meridian. Bonner County, Idaho, according to the plat there of recorded in Book 18, the plats page 61. Notice of the public hearing is published in the Bonner County Data Bee on August 16, 2022. I will now recite the order and procedure for the public hearing. One, examination of the subject of the public hearing by city staff. Two, presentation by applicant. Note that council members should address their questions to the applicant at that time. Three, opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. The order for those providing testimony be as follows, will be as follows. First, those in favor. Second, those are neutral. And third, those opposed. Applicants rebuttal testimony will be forth, at which time the final questions may be asked of the applicant. Please note that if new facts are elicited during rebuttal, the public will be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. Five, close the public hearing. Six, council deliberates. No new information may provide, may be provided after the hearing has been closed. With questions directed only to city staff during deliberation. For the record, any written comments received prior to agenda posting were included in the meeting packet or otherwise provided to council. Please note that the public hearing is for comments only. Do not address any questions to the council, myself, or city staff. If council members have questions for the person testifying, they should ask those questions at the time of their testimony. For those participating on Zoom, you'll need a working microphone. Uh, on your phone or your computer to speak. If you wish to speak in favor or neutral or opposed, I will call for testimony on each in that order. You'll raise your hand on Zoom at that time. When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen asking whether you'd like to unmute. Then you will need to unmute yourself in order to be heard. Those here in chambers who'd like to speak need to, again, complete a signup form in the front of the room on the table. Hand it to the clerk up in the front right. Please state on the form whether you wish to speak in favor, neutral, or opposed, so we can put you in the right category. Please do not approach the dais. If you have any written materials for council, please hand those to the clerk up front. And just a reminder that those in attendance are not to disrupt the meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the council. Disrupted behavior includes clapping, disruptive noises, comments, he-haws, or exclamations from the audience. Before we proceed, I'd like to ask for confirmation from each council member that you've had no ex parte contact or conflict of interest as pertains to this request. Please state so. None. Okay, thank you. I'll now yield the floor to a city planner, Amy Twithen, for an introduction and explanation of this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, this is a city council public hearing and case number PS 220002. Boyer Farm Estates Phase 2 Preliminary Plats. Thus proposed subdivision is a 25-lot, single-family subdivision in the R M Multiple Family zoning district. On an approximately five-acre lot, excuse me. The subdivision is an extension of a previously approved subdivision Phase 1 of Boyer Farms. Shown on the upper right map. And then at the lower right is the identified parcel and the zoning district. The preliminary plaque, as shown here, is the left part to the left. Uh, it includes a 60-foot right-of-way, which will extend Jersey Street from the current subdivision to Samuelson. And then, uh, these lots are all a minimum of 50 feet of width. Uh, and more than 5,000 square feet in the area, which is the minimum size for single-family lots in the R S Single Family District. Uh, these are some images of Phase 1. What is there currently? Looking to the east is existing road and sidewalks. And then to the west is where that subdivision will be expanded. Uh, this is the provided preliminary public infrastructure plan. That again, shows the extension of the street. Both sides of the street will have sidewalks, as well as there will be sidewalks along Samuelson Avenue. Uh, this preliminary plan is the first step in the subdivision process. Should the preliminary plan be approved, review and approval of the public infrastructure permit would occur. Followed by infrastructure completion and acceptance, and then a final plat would be brought forward. At its August 2nd meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat with conditions that have been incorporated into a development agreement for city councils' consideration. In accordance with Sandpoint City Code, Section 995, notice has been provided to property owners within 300 feet of the parcel boundaries. And agencies have also been notified. Notice has also been posted at the site for seven days before this hearing. And a summary has been provided in the official newspaper of general circulation 21 days prior to the hearing date. Following public testimony and subsequent deliberations, city council may take one of the following actions on the preliminary plat. In accordance with Sandpoint City Code, Section 1018D. Uh, the preliminary plat can be approved, approved with conditions, denied, or remanded back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. With that, that is my overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions?
Now, I know it's probably because I just had eye surgery and I can't see well out of one eye now. But when I look at the plat map, are the new one, are the new lots smaller?
The new lots are approximately the same size. Some of them are smaller, but if you look at this, I think it's, it's deceiving because there's so much text on each lot.
Okay.
But there's 24 lots to the east of that North-South street is Holstein Place. There's 24 lots on that side, and there are 25 lots to the west.
Okay, so it's just my eye. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Thank you for that, Amy. Appreciate it. Okay. Next will be the applicant's presentation. As a reminder, council should address their questions to the applicant at that time. And the applicant is participating remotely this evening. Yeah.
Okay. Well, my name's Adam Brizand. I'm the representative for Carousel Holdings on this project. We've, we've recently completed or in the process of completing Phase 1, and this is the extension of that. The lot sizes, the answer to the earlier question are essentially the same as Phase 1. And we're excited to be developing in the city of Sandpoint and happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you. Council, questions?
I have one question, Mr. Mayor. Adam, Councilman Walker here. I am not. I am not at the present time recalling what the status of the property to the southeast of Phase Four to the south of Phase One is, but my question is, will there be connectivity with the development going in directly south of your Phase One via the yet-to-be-named street? I don't believe that's your development, but I'm wondering if you have coordinated with the developer to the south on connecting through to, I believe that's Woodview. Woodland, yeah.
Yeah, correct. We're not the developer of that property, but we have provided a road that stubbed out that direction for a future connection. And the road within our plat is paved with utilities in it and ready to be connected to it property line.
Okay, so you anticipate future connectivity to the south, but that's not your property, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
All right, the public hearing will now be opened. Is there anyone who has signed up to testify in favor of the request? Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to testify who is neutral to the application?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Becky Meyer, Lake Ponderay School District Superintendent.
On behalf of the school district, we did, I did have a letter approved by the school trustees. We can get in time for the application when you need it.
So I decided to come speak in person. I just asked that the council, planning and zoning, I went to city of Ponderay last night as well. Each development that comes may not look like it's going to impact the schools significantly, but the cumulative effect for our area, I just want to put it on record that for our school district, we can't charge impact fees. We have to go back out to the voters. And we are the last state in the entire country where to get a bond passed has to be supermajority, and we don't have any money from the state, at least not as of yet. I'm not sure where this last three hundred and thirty million is going to go from the governor, but I just want to be able to say, we are going to be submitting letters in a neutral stance, just saying to make sure that when people are planning out that we think about schools. One thing I know that's worked in a different community where I was a superintendent is developers. This is obviously not big enough, but they have donated land for short, you know, elementary schools, ten acres. We had several developers that did that. That was a really nice win-win to be able to have a community building up and a small neighborhood school inside. So just wanted to go on record as neutral and let the council and mayor know that we will be submitting letters from this point forward. I had that approved by our school board. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Appreciate that. Madam Clerk, anyone else neutral to the request?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to testify who is opposed?
No, Mr. Mayor. For the record, we have one representative, representative not wishing to speak who is in favor of a, excuse me.
Thank you. All right, last chance. Anyone here who'd like to speak on the request? Okay. Are you none? Any further questions from council? Okay. We will now close the public hearing. So at this time, council will deliberate. No new information may be provided, and questions may be directed directed only to city staff during deliberation. So, floor is open. Okay, I'll entertain a motion that the request be approved.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded that the request for a subdivision preliminary plat for PS two two dash zero 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 two Boyer Farm Estates Phase Two be approved. Is there any further deliberation? This may roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure. Is that with the conditions or just approved?
Mr. Mayor, there is a sample motion in the staff report that has some proposed findings in there that need to be articulated on the record.
It is missing from my I don't have. So I could request some assistance here from staff. Here we go. Thank you. I would entertain a motion that the Sandpoint City Council approved the request by Carousel Holdings LLC for approval of the Boyer Farm Estates Phase Two preliminary plat for a twenty-five-foot lot proposed subdivision located east of North Samuelson Avenue, approximately three hundred feet north of Woodland Avenue, south of the Bonner County Readiness Center, and west of Boyer Pharma Estates Phase One Parcel Number RPS three nine five zero 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 three zero zero one eight one zero eight, subject to the following conditions. Is this? Okay, thank you. One, final plat shall make note that no driveway access is permitted onto Samuelson Avenue. Two, subject to a, an executed development agreement with standard terms and conditions associated with the public infrastructure improvements. The motion to approve is made based on the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the following findings of fact. One, the preliminary plat was set for public hearing before the planning commission or a hearing examiner, only after all required documents were received and fees were paid. Two, notice of the public hearing was sent to the property owners within three hundred feet of the development. Three, the city council conducted a public hearing. For the commission's findings, as documented in the meeting minutes approved August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, are deemed accurate and correct. Five, as presented in the staff report, the application is substantially compliant with the provisions of Sandpoint City Code. So, we have a motion and a second that still stands. Okay, is there any deliberation? This will be a roll call.
Counselor Gro?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
I would just like to comment that Ms. Myers is here that I do appreciate that you actually had input on some of these planning developments. I know that sometimes we get a little piece of paper in our packets, but that you decided to speak upon that, I think is more impactful upon the council and allows them to pay a little bit more attention to how that can impact the schools. And I know the numbers are going up, so I appreciate you being here to say that. Yes.
Counselor Spudham?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. Thank you for your patience and support there, counsel. With the public hearing now closed and preliminary plat approved, council will now consider approval of the company development agreement. Does council have any questions about the agreement? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the Boyer Farm Pharma Estates Phase Two subdivision development agreement with Carousel Holdings LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Is there any deliberation? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Gro?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Spudham?
Yes.
Development agreement is approved, and now under old business, we have a request for approval of the final plat for Madison Meadows subdivision. And now you have the floor to city planner Amy Twithin.
So before you, under this action item, is the final plat decision for the Madison Meadows subdivision. Madison Meadows is a ten single-family lot preliminary plat that was approved with conditions by city council on October sixth of twenty twenty-one. Required infrastructure has now been completed, and the applicant is seeking final plat approval. Final plat approval is necessary before building permits may be issued. On the upper right is the location of the subdivision north of Cedar east of Madison, south of Moss Hard Street. And the layout of the subdivision is the lower right. In reviewing the submitted cities that have determined the final plat is substantially in accordance with the approved preliminary plat and city codes and could be approved with the noted conditions addressed before plat is recorded. Pursuant to Section ten one eighty, city council shall approve, approve with conditions, refer the matter back to the planning commission, or deny the final plat. That is all I have.
Okay. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I did have a question. Have they, when you say infrastructure has been on some level, does it include the sidewalks, or is that mainly the underground water and such?
Correct. Curbing gutter utilities, the sidewalks can be delayed until occupancy.
The sidewalks can be delayed. Then my question would be, it's a bit hard to see that smaller map, but I believe in our packet that was map number three. And there were two different versions of that. And I had a concern that the way the sidewalk was shown drawn in around the circular part of the cul-de-sac, that it was put right up against the curve, and there was no green stripping in there. So my concern, my concern would be for snow storage in the winter and that the sidewalk would become unusable. It was map three.
Mr. Mayor, may I assist in addressing that question?
So this is the map that I was referring to.
Yes, and understood. It was actually a conversation we had during the preliminary plat approval process.
Okay.
Yep, which has been a while. The sidewalks are in place at this location. There's a few things that need to be repaired as part of the punch list items. They are in place as shown here. Our means and methods for removing snow within a cul-de-sac is actually pushing the snow into the center, and we haul it off. So we don't need that buffer zone that we typically do to store snow along that cul-de-sac area. So from an operational perspective, this is consistent with how we've handled other cul-de-sacs, and again, it is constructed.
Okay, and then as far as the homeowner's responsibility, I guess they can just pile that onto their lawn area if they are responsible for shoveling the sidewalk.
Correct, and typically that, I mean, that's consistent throughout town. The buffer zone is for the street plows and the snow from the street.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Amanda, maybe while you're up there, could I ask one question as well?
Sure.
If I recall during the planning and zoning hearing for this subdivision, there was quite a bit of anxiety from some neighbors about stormwater on this property. And in the subsequent year, can you talk a little bit about what has been discovered and what the solutions to the stormwater issues on this property were? I believe the report talked about a lot being dedicated as a stormwater swell or something. Could you maybe point that on the map and talk a little bit about that briefly?
Sure, and I can actually show it to you on the one that's on the screen. A great question. The stormwater at this location was quite complicated. The concerns that were brought up during the preliminary plat process were regarding the properties to the north of the subdivision, and a concern that it might, this subdivision may compound some challenges that they have on that north side. The drainage patterns are independent of one another, so each subdivision handles water separately. One doesn't flow from the north to the south and the south to the north. You are right, the southwestern lot that you can see in the bottom of the screen there on the bottom left, tract A is referenced on the final plat. That is dedicated only for stormwater, and it is intended, the final plat will represent that that's a non-buildable lot and that the homeowners association and those final CCNRs will represent that the HOA needs to maintain that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right. Nothing else? All right, thank you, Amanda. Appreciate that. Okay, I would entertain a motion that Sandpoint City Council, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho code and Sandpoint City Code, approved the request by Atlas Development Incorporated for Madison Avenue ten lot proposed subdivision located at four twelve and four twenty-four Madison Avenue. Parcel ID numbers RPS three six eight six zero 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 four zero A and RPS three six eight zero 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 three eight three zero A, and bounded by private property to northeast and south Madison Avenue to the west, subject to the following conditions. Conditions, A, you within Section Six of the staff report provided, A through you within the Section Six of the staff were provided, and also based on evidence, records, and testimony. The reasons for approving this request are, one, staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to subdivisions contain, excuse me, contained in Sandpoint City Code Title Nine, Chapter Nine. Two, based on information presented at the hearing and the placement of limitations through conditions, the application is in compliance with the subdivision and zoning requirements in Sandpoint City Code per the following justification that is given. And three, the proposed subdivision is consistent with the overall planning goals and objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This will be a recall. Be a vote.
Roll call.
One at a time.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Gro?
Yes.
Counselor Spudham?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Great. Motion passes. The final, final item under old business this evening is consideration of an agreement with the local highway technical assistance council for the twenty twenty-two Local Children Pedestrian Safety Program Division Avenue Corridor Safety Improvement Project. It's long title. Phase one. I'll now yield the floor to the Infrastructure Development Services Manager, Amanda Wilson. Director, sorry, managers. Such a lowly term, director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize. I just pulled my screen really quick. You've seen the whole presentation prior to starting. I apologize about that. So yes, Division Avenue Corridor Improvement Project Phase One. The requested action this evening is for city council to consider approving a grant agreement for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the local highway technical assistance council. This is specific to the Child Pedestrian Safety Program for improving the eastern side of Division Avenue, south of Superior Street to Highway Two. This is not the first time we've had a conversation about this project. I put the background going all the way back to two thousand and eighteen, when we first did a road safety audit for Division Avenue. And moving that forward through city council authorized and staffed last December to apply for the grant. In the spring of this year, we were notified by LTAC that we were not selected. Our project was not selected to receive funds for the program due to limited funding and all the competing projects. However, resulting from a bill signed by the governor to provide more funds for the program, they allowed all applicants to reapply and dedicated a total of ten million dollars statewide for projects that could be considered to be completed within the second phase of the application program. So round two, we were successful in being selected. Division Avenue Phase One project was ranked seventeen out of seventy-nine projects. Division Avenue Phase One project was ranked seventeen out of seventy-nine projects statewide. And for the full amount, so the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the maximum grant amount that you could apply for. And we have been selected to receive that full amount. If city council should move forward with providing approval of the grant agreement. The intent again would be to complete the project by December ninth of twenty twenty-three. Refresher on Division Avenue, I know it is near and dear to everyone in this room and traveled by multiple modes of users. The primary issue within this selected phase one is the substandard and hazardous sidewalk on the eastern side of division. So it varies anywhere from three feet to a maximum of four feet with this location. We have sidewalks, as you can tell through the picture, that are non-compliant by going through the driveway aprons, they don't meet ADA. And quite frankly, as we have discussed on many occasions, the lack of a buffer at this location, it makes it very difficult to maintain during the snow season. These photos don't really show the full picture, this was early in the year. Typically, this corridor of sidewalk is impassable for pedestrians, specifically all of the kids utilizing both the high school as well as the library. The grade school that are in this corridor and a variety of other uses along with residents. This particular grant program really focuses on kids, hence the name Children Pedestrian Safety Program. And improving safety of existing systems, not providing new infrastructure for pedestrians. Again, this is just an example of an ADA ramp that could use some additional improvements, it's non-compliant. As was identified in our road safety audit. So this is what Division Avenue looks like today, as many of you are aware. We have a multi-use path on the west side, substandard bike lanes, a bike lanes minimum width is five feet, those are only four. And we have really, really large drive aisles, so eighteen feet compared to a typical even highway lane is twelve feet. Overall, Division Avenue has a long list of intended improvements as we, many, many times. As noted in the road safety audit, a couple just facts that I think are important regarding why Division Avenue and why spend the grant on this location. There's over six thousand trips a day on that corridor, it is an arterial. It is a primary truck route at this time until we can complete other improvements to get trucks off of division. And we have over two thousand kids attending school along that division corridor, including south of Highway two. The additional schools in that area. So at this time, we estimate that entire corridor project being approximately ten million dollars. This phase one is the first step in moving the project forward, right? It's obviously long from solving or far from solving all of the challenges in this corridor. But it's taking at least the first effort towards that end goal, it is a multi-year project. And I'm not going to read all of the different improvements that we've previously discussed, but just highlighting that the intent with the image on the screen there. Is to provide for a wider multi-use path that meets standards, a wider planting strip between the travel lanes. I say narrower streets, they're still standard streets, but it is bringing that to a more manageable width. And then another six foot buffer with a standard six foot sidewalk. So that eastern corridor of division as a result of this grant would become a six foot wide sidewalk. Which is actually more in alignment with the industry standard. So it's not the minimum required, it's actually going above and beyond what's required as a minimum. This map is reflecting in blue, the connectivity from Superior down to the connection point there at the community path. I don't anticipate that the project will be able to stretch improvements all the way to the highway, highway. Specifically because of the signal at that location and some of the challenges associated with it. We'll stretch the dollars as far as we possibly can, beginning at Superior and working our way south. I've already highlighted why this location, there's a few additional points on this slide and they were included in your packet as well. With the full grant application that went into details regarding the purpose of this project and how we intend to go about achieving it. I do want to note that there is no match required, this is truly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars upfront to spend on construction. We can't use it for design, we can't use it for staff time or construction management. That is intended within our budget, we are contributing to the project with an estimated fifty thousand dollars to do those activities. Outside of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the grant. So while not required, we're still providing a match, if that makes sense. Again, this is an image representing the intent on the east side of Division Avenue. So because it's a, only half of the intersection, we are not impacting anything west of the center line. So as we get closer to the intersections, there's going to be some additional confinement of the lanes. With, again, this being the ultimate goal. That phase process is going to result in a lateral shift, so as you're heading northbound on Division Avenue. And the sidewalk on your right hand side is further away, you're going to actually shift to the left closer to the center line and come back. It is a standard throughout the country to reduce the speed of travel as well as improve safety. This is the overall timeline and budget as a result of the most updated grant application. So our intent is to construct the project outside of the school season. So have the design ready, have all the bits completed so that we're ready to hit the ground running as soon as kids get out of school and be done before they go back into session. In twenty twenty-three. Again, the requested action is for approval of the grant agreement to receive two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for phase one.
Great, thank you Amanda, council, any questions?
You forgot my, one of my favorite parts is the new street trees. Over twenty-five new street trees, which I think is going to make people want to walk underneath them on hot, warm days. And then after looking at the pictures, so we're only doing a small section, so. I'm sure you have some magical way to integrate the bike lane that's still going to be on that side of the street, in the street. And I just see that, can you maybe?
I can generally speak to it, our next phase is really getting through the details and the weeds of the design. At this time, I anticipate it'll be a share of scenario on northbound at that location and then merge back into the substandard bike lanes that exist today.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so this is more of an observation with the staff report to go over and look at the dates and have this go from two thousand and eighteen to present. Which is two thousand and twenty-two. I think it's important for us as a community, as well as this body, future bodies, also to recognize that. The previous people within our community, as well as those who have sat up here, this is one of the reasons why it's important to have master plans, to be able to have. A greater vision and to be able to have kind of a hit sheet, one through a hundred for this town to be able to, to identify the priorities. Fortunately, this is around the schools and children, obviously, they are our priority. We hear terms such as shovel ready. What I'd like our community to hear is that shovel readiness is also an attempt for us to be competitive with other municipalities. That are competing for more or less the same dollar. And as staff had, had recognized, we were, we were denied not out of effort, but out of so much funds. And so many people that were, so many other municipalities that were competing for the same dollar. So I think it's important for us to have master plans, it's important for us to remember and recognize the previous bodies as well as. The future bodies and staff to, there, there's a good reason to have these master plans, so we're not making this stuff up as we go. As well as we're, we, we want to be responsive to our constituency. But we also want, it's important to stay the course on the master plans that have been developed by other individuals and to not necessarily. We're not distracted by things. However, we do want to hear, but also apply the principles of that master plan and be able to prioritize things. And it's, it's due, I think in large part to that effort of those groups of people, as well as the tenacity of staff. To continue to keep their eye on the ball with the monies that are available. I appreciate the state of Idaho allowing more money to be out there for us to be able to do these things for our kids. I think it's, it's, the reason why I'm saying this is it is important for this body and future bodies to recognize the master plans. As well as to put forth the energy and effort to continue to update those because they do change. Our, our needs for our, our city change. If we were here, if we were talking about this in two thousand and eighteen, I can guarantee you that our needs are different today than they were then. However, the priorities of our children and our streets were similar. So it, I would just like all of us to, to remember that and recognize that moving forward, so. No comments, no questions, just a big long ranting comment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, on, following up on Andy's comment there. With the, with regards to the funding of this program, I, I think a lot of the credit for this money coming available goes to the Idaho Walkback Alliance, which is a lobby group down in Boise. Which I hope Sample Point is a member of. Pondered Peddlers do support financially as, as annual members, that, that group lobbied tirelessly with our state legislators to get this additional ten million dollars added. And the Child Pedestrian Safety Grant Program, which allowed us to get this money. And they're currently lobbying our legislators to extend this to become an annual ten million dollar program. It's not guaranteed to be approved for next year, so I'd encourage all who are listening to contact our local legislators and let them know that this, this money is much needed. Because we're chipping away at what, maybe five percent of our division corridor with this, this grant, when you look at the whole, what's in our multimodal transportation plan. We, we really could benefit from these funds in the years to come. But I did want to recognize the Idaho Walkback Alliance, which deserves a lot of the credit for this money, for this bill getting signed by the governor earlier this year.
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, a question for Amanda, who's responsible for the trees that are in the plant zone on the east side?
Or it's, or for planting them or for maintenance?
Maintenance of them.
The adjacent property owners.
The property owners, and then as I'm looking here on division. Most of the businesses that might be impact have a secondary entrance either on Michigan Street or Superior, with the exception of Gription Tire. They look like they have three entrance exits on Division Street here, they've got, they don't have anything coming off of two there. Is there anything done to mitigate any issues they might have for customers coming in or they're, them having tire trucks? And product trucks coming in and out of there?
I don't think we'll get as far south as Gription Tire, we'll stop short of them. However, your, your point is still valid and our intent is through the design process, just like we would on any of our transportation projects. Is to have one-on-one conversations during that design with every single business. Because the ultimate goal would be to reduce the quantity as well as the width of some of those driveways, just from an overall safety perspective. How each business will be affected or not, those conversations are yet to come.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question. Any other questions, council? Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this issue?
No, Mr. Mayor, we have no further submissions from the public to comment on this matter.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for LTAC Local Agreement two thousand and twenty-two Local Children Pedestrian Safety Program. Division Avenue Corridor Safety Improvement Phase One. City of Sample Point CPS two zero two two dash one seven, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any, any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Spudham?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. First under new business is consideration of adoption of a medical premium stabilization reserve policy. As well as some additional minor changes to the city's financial policies and guidelines. And now you have the floor to city administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some support in this presentation too, so Sarah Lynn's our financial, finance director and treasurer. Is also participating to answer any questions relative to policy updates. And I'm also going to have Autumn. Autumn Porter with Taylor Insurance come up to the podium as well in case council has any questions. And when we renewed our, our medical. Our medical plan last year with regents, we were successfully able to negotiate. A, a refund endorsement with that policy and under that refund endorsement. What it provides for is a reconciliation six months after the end of an annual plan year. Where they do an analysis of our premiums paid in and then our expenses incurred and paid out under the plan. And if revenues premiums paid exceed expenses paid out under the plan, under our refund endorsement. The difference is shared between the insurance provider and the city split fifty fifty. And comes back to the city as a refund endorsement. The benefit to the city with this refund endorsement. And then our recommendation to council is to establish in our reserve and fund balance policies. A medical premium stabilization reserve policy. So that in years where we are fortunate to get a rebate back, that money goes into a reserve. That ultimately is controlled by council to offset increases in premiums that we may see in future years. For those who have been on council for a few terms, counselor Rule will remember that we went through several years ago. A time where we were really challenged because our premiums, based on our own utilization, were increasing year over year on our insurance. And had several years where we had double digit increases. That then becomes a challenge for us to balance in our annual city budget. But it not only impacts the city's budget, also impacts our employees who are paying a portion of premiums for dependents as well. And unfortunately, during that time and often what happens is because it tends to be cyclical. With insurance plan renewals is when we see increases in plans, it also tends to be years. Where we may not see the same level of increases with market adjustments for employees. So it becomes a tough balance in keeping our employees up with market demands and inflation. And then not actually seeing. A reduction in their overall compensation as a result of premium increases. And likewise, for the city and taxpayers, a reduction in services or in capital projects. Because now we're having to pull from those budget areas to offset medical premiums. And so a best practice within government agencies is when you're able to either be yourself funded. Or when you receive a refund, which is not very common in this industry and, and I'll get to that in a second. But when you're able to negotiate that in your, in your plan is for that to be set aside into a reserve. To offset those years when you see those increases. So therefore, Sarah has taken the lead in drafting a reserve policy that would set aside these premiums. And I'll, and provide for those reserves to only be used in years where we see our premium increases. Exceed ten percent over the prior year. Fortunately, we have not seen that in the last several years, in fact, we have seen premium reductions in addition to our ability to negotiate. This rebate into our renewals. And that anytime we were using a premium increase in reserve to offset those increase. We would include that in our proposed budget to council. And so it would be a council action authorizing the use of the reserve funds to offset these costs. With that said, I want to give an opportunity to Autumn to address anything that I may have missed. But I think it's important to note to council that the insurance rebate we received for our plan year twenty twenty-one. Was almost seventy-five thousand dollars. And initially, when the insurance fund company calculated what our rebate would be. And Autumn had contacted me with the initial calculation, it was fifty-two thousand dollars. And Autumn took it upon herself as our broker for the city to go through and do a full reconciliation of what the insurance. For the city to go through and do a full reconciliation of what the insurance company had calculated. And determined that they had shorted the city in their calculation and was able to. Through a reconciliation and negotiation with them, get our rebate for the plan year 2021 at 74,861. I wanted to highlight this for counsel because in multiple, in capacity, my capacity with. Several prior employers, I have been in the position where I have negotiated. Plan renewals for medical dental plan designs. And I have worked with Taylor Insurance and Autumn specifically since I have been here in 2016. And I think it's important for our employees and the public to hear and the council as well. What outstanding service we receive from Taylor Insurance. It has been my experience in my time here and I've worked with multiple brokers in the past. Taylor has always had and Autumn specifically, the best interests of the city, the city employees. Looked out for the city in our negotiations for our renewals and this rebate that we were able to negotiate a year ago. Is not only the amount, but also the ability to negotiate that premium reserve. And, and rebate program is specifically because of the work that Autumn does on behalf of the city every year. So. I also want to recognize Autumn for her work and give her an opportunity to address anything that I've missed relative to the rebate.
You did a fantastic job. I appreciate the kind words. And I work very tirelessly during the renewal process with Jennifer and she is a big proponent of keeping benefits as strong as they can. And keeping premiums as affordable as possible. We all know the costs are going up and. Insurance costs continue to go up as well as our medical care needs to continue to go up. So. And I, I really appreciate what she said. I did go through this calculation with a fine tooth comb. And the impact of around 50,000 to 75,000 due to my efforts. I mean, I, I appreciate that recognition because. Most individuals would simply say, here, Mr. Mayor, Council Jennifer, here's your 50,000. It's pretty nice. So. And I appreciate that. The fact that you guys are considering the medical stabilization reserve, I think is super important because although the last few years. We have had reductions and being able to stabilize our benefit structure is fantastic, but there will be ebb and flow to that. So. There will be a point where staff or dependents will need a lot of medical care. And our loss ratio meeting our paid claims will exceed premiums. And when that happens, we'll face a large increase. So. This is a great way to be able to preserve affordability when you do face those years. Where it's a double digit increase. So this refund endorsement is still on our current contract. Your group is pacing well at this point to possibly get another refund in 2023. But it's really hard to forecast that because next week somebody could have. A major accident, a major cancer diagnosis. And as soon as that happens, you might have a quarter million dollars of claims in one month. And it wipes out your reserve. So again, that's why the stabilization is nice because if we do have those big years of claims. We have a way to offset the premiums that will be requested from staff.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Autumn, for your dedication to the city of Sandpoint and our place. Really appreciate it. Any questions? No, okay. Thanks for that presentation.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seeing none. I would entertain a motion to approve the City of Sandpoint Medical Premium Stabilization Reserve Policy and additional changes to the city's financial policies. And guidelines as presented by staff. Is there a motion?
The move.
Second. They moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Spudham?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Gro?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. And finally, under new business is a request for approval of the City of Sandpoint National Endowment for the Arts. ARP, ARP Subgrant Program. I'll now yield the floor to City Arts and Historic Preservation Officer Heather Upton. Thanks, Heather.
So, thank you so much for having me tonight. It's so exciting to be here at my first. Council meeting as your new arts and historic preservation officer. Now I'd like to present a thing here. So, um, tonight I'd love to share with you this amazing opportunity that we have. On profit arts organizations in Sandpoint. This is the NEA ARP Operations Support Grant. And a little history behind it. In 2021, the City of Sandpoint was awarded. $150,000 from the National Endowment for the Arts with the American Rescue Plan Funding. $50,000 from the grant funded the new arts and historic preservation position. Thank you very much. And 100,000 will be used as pass-through funds for the NEA ARP Operations Support Grant. The program offers operating support for nonprofit arts organizations based in Sandpoint. Who provide significant program services. And I just want to really emphasize the fact and the importance. Of this grant and how this is a general operations grant, which is huge. Most grants are program related. And coming from a nonprofit background, it's always hard because where are the funds coming to the staff which are running those programs? So it's, it's kind of a unicorn moment, which is very exciting. So in terms of the grant details, the grant awards will range from five to $30,000. This grant will only be offered once. It's going to be a reimbursement grant program. And there'll be a semi-annual report where they'll have to provide documentation for reimbursement. So what is this grant eligible for? Salary support. Fees stipends for artists and contractual personnel, day-to-day operations, facility costs. Costs associated with health and safety supplies for staff, visitors and audiences and marketing and promotion costs. So. So the things that really help those nonprofits move forward. And there are many things that this grant specifically doesn't support. And I have it listed on two pages and this is straight from. The government grant that we received at the National Endowment of Arts. So it's really important that we're very clear about what they can use this for and what they can as we're. We're going through this process. So what is the process? So the applicants will, and. Their, the applications will come to me and I'll review them for eligibility and completeness. And then step two, there will be a citizen advisory committee and that will be comprised of arts, culture and historic preservation commission members. And mayor designated community members. And so what this will be, they'll make up the citizen advisory committee. And then the third step, the, the recommendations from the citizen advisory committee will be taken to you all.
Heather, can I say a quick question?
Yes.
Can you specify, it's not the Historic Preservation Commission itself that reviews the grant applications, but just some selected members from that commission?
That's a great question. And so I'll just add a further clarification. It's the arts, culture and historic preservation, them two merged commissions.
Right.
And so, yes, and the reason for that selection is there are quite a few members on that commission that are part of arts organizations. So. Yeah, yeah. So once the recusal, you know, happens, that commission will be a little bit smaller. So we wanted to make sure that we had enough. Strong minds to make those decisions. Great question. Okay, so important dates to remember, September 15th, that's when we're launching it. The application deadline will be September 30th. So it's a pretty tight window there. The award recipient will be on October 24th. And then semi, you know, reports are going to be due on February 1st of 2023. And then the recipient closeout will be on August 31st of 2023. So the period of performance will be from October 1st, 2022 to July 31st of 2023. So. And, excuse me there. So that leads me to see if any of you have any questions.
I do have another question.
Yeah.
Mind. Do you know an approximate number of organizations in our community that might be eligible for this grant? Just wondering how like 100,000 sounds like a lot of money, but I don't know if we have 10 organizations or 200 organizations that fall under this umbrella.
Absolutely. So there's some pretty specific specifications. So they have to be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and they have to have a unique. Identify UEI. So it's a federal unique identification code associated with their organization and. There are, so keeping that in mind, it's the, I believe the impact will be very, very healthy and very strong for the nonprofits that have art programming. And we, when we think of art programming, we need to think of it with arts and culture. And so if there's an institution that has. A, that's preserving an art collection, for instance, you know, they could potentially qualify. And so it will be really interesting and exciting to see. What our community comes to us and decides what their art programming looks like and how we can support them. So. Yes.
Do, uh, schools are not eligible for this though, are they?
Certain accredited schools and also tribal organizations are.
Okay.
And I would really, I think that was the last page of my slide. It's not popping up. I do apologize here. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. I'd love to answer any of those with further details of eligibility. In the grant, which will be released on the website on September 15th, there will be very specific information about. What that eligibility looks like and you know, the impact and so forth.
Just have one question. What type of outreach have we done to the community?
So there will be a fantastic press release that will be coming out and a great direction of where. People can apply for the grant and will also with that press release, we'll be targeting all of the main media sources. We'll also have it on our. All of our social media handles within the city as well.
Okay. If I may, it's already a buzz. So they already know. Believe me, I've had people already asking me and I'm like, you have to wait.
Yeah, it's, it's a very, very exciting opportunity and I feel so lucky to be a part of it.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Heather. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for approval of the City of Sandpoint National Endowment for the Arts ARP Subgrant Program.
Second.
They moved in seconded. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Welcome.
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Spudham?
Yes.
Counselor Gro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
And with that, that concludes our regular agenda this evening. We have an executive session, recess for five minutes. So we can clear the chambers and if council members need to use the laboratory or whatever, they may.
Super fast.